Tuesday, April ninth, we do have a quorum. I'd like to ask Pastor Bill Phillips to kind of lead us in the invocation and pledge, please.
If you would, bow your heads with me. Father, we thank you for a time to come together to administer the business of our city, our town, Lord. And we just ask God that you would give these ones that we have selected to represent us, to make these decisions. God, give them wisdom, give them calmness of spirit, God, lead them in every decision they make, God. They would be in the very center of your will. We thank you for all the wonderful blessings you've given the city of McAllister. God, it's a privilege and an honor to be a part of it, Lord, and we thank you for that. And we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Pritchard.
Yes.
Mayor.
Here. We are going to go in a different order than is actually on the agenda tonight because I'm going to read a letter that's going to take away the need to do either item number one, two, or swearing in ceremony. Dear Mayor and Council, after much thought and discussion with my family, I've decided to decline to take office as the fifth ward council representative for McAllister. I ran for the position because I have lived in McAllister all of my life and I truly wanted to make a contribution to my hometown. I am humbled and very appreciative of the voters of Ward five who had the confidence in me and thank them for their votes. I do not want to be a distraction for the important work that this council has before it. I believe it is in the city's best interest that I not take office. I understand that this may mean that the council must appoint someone to represent Ward five for that position. I recommend Billy Jack boat ride. Thank you for your consideration and your public services community. Sincerely, Jeremy Thomas. So Mr. Thomas has declined to, to take the fifth ward position. He does, on his, excuse me, on the recommendation, the way that it's normally been done in the past is that we will set a date where anyone from fifth ward that is interested in applying for the position will do so. And we would interview them at that time and pick the, the next candidate from that group. So we do have a special meeting coming on Thursday, at which we will declare the office vacant and set the date for the, the applications for the position. I do want to say also that Mr. Thomas has been very professional and very classy all the way through this, this issue. And he, you know, it's, it's a very hard thing to do to run for our office. And unfortunately, because of the way things turned out, it just couldn't, it couldn't be followed through with. And I really appreciate the way that he's handled this. And I think he's, I think he, he's, he's just done a good, a good job. And unfortunately, just can't follow through with it. So with that, then unless there's any other comments, we will move on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. We do have one, one citizen, Thomas Ortiz. If you would come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Thomas Ortiz, I live in Tuesday or sixty Seminole. I would like to, excuse me, I'd like to request permission to operate a business within the city limits. It would be green waste disposal. I'm not expecting like a vote or anything, but I did have some, some questions about permission. Because in the city ordinance, it says that one oh six three fifty eight, the city has exclusive rights to collect and remove and haul refuse. And then in the contract with solid waste, it says pretty much the same thing, that they have exclusive rights to franchise license and privilege within the territorial jurisdiction. I just want to get yard waste.
Because this is a non-agenda item, it's not something that we can discuss with you. But I can, I can give you some advice to, to set up, set a meeting with the city manager and Jamie Clifton from the codes department.
I've talked to her a little bit.
And then set a meeting with the city manager and then get, get that all lined up so that, so that everybody's on the same page. And then if necessary, you can contact one of us so we can make an agenda item so that we can discuss it.
Okay, it says that the contract is up. Okay, we can discuss it. Can I get your name and your, your number there?
Sure, my cell phone number, nine one eight. Everybody write this down, okay?
Is it in here? I don't know.
It's actually on my business card, so.
I don't have one.
Four two one, nine nine zero zero. Office number is four two three, nine three zero zero, extension four nine six four.
And Mr. Stasiak prefers that you call late at night or very early in the morning.
Is there anything else that you guys could think of that I could bring with me like to the next meeting or whenever we are able to get it on the agenda item or any like information that you'd want me to have?
That would be, I would, I would, the way I would do it if I were you is I would make a phone call first to, and set up the meeting with Ms. Clifton and Mr. Stasiak. And that while, while you're having that conversation, they could probably give you advice on what, what, what you need. And they'll get a little better understanding of what you're trying to do. So that you guys, when you do have the meeting, we'll have all of the necessary.
Awesome.
You know, because this is a non-agenda item, we can't, we can't do any business on it because we'd be breaking the law essentially.
I'm in the entire week, so give me a call.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We will now move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. It will be enacted with one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from the March twelfth, twenty nineteen regular meeting of McAllister City Council. B, approval of claims for March twenty, twenty nineteen through April second, twenty nineteen. C, consider an act upon a request from McAllister United for support and assistance in the construction of soccer fields to be located west of the southeast Expo Center. D, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the work order for professional services with Infrastructure Solutions LLC for engineering services for Washington Avenue, Sixth Street through Fifth Street, based to improvements. And that is it. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? Councilman Reed?
A and C.
Anyone else? Take a motion in a second to approve items B and D. Motion, Council Smith, second vice mayor Stevens, any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Councilman Reed?
On item A, on the, on the minutes, the, the roll call shows me as being absent. I was, I was not absent during that meeting. And also under scheduled business, the, I think it's item number eight. Where it talks about the, where we talked about the marijuana ordinance. There's no mention in the minutes that, that a vote was taken for the emergency clause for that. I know we did it out of order.
Yeah.
But there's nothing in the minutes that, that show we took that vote or the results of it.
So.
Asking that the minutes be corrected.
That's, that's a motion, I'm assuming, a motion being corrected to reflect the, is there a second? Councilman Smith, second, any discussion? Okay, so this is for item A. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
And that's with the corrections.
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Item C.
I'd like to hear a little bit, if, if there's anybody from the, the club, McAllister United here, I'd like to hear a little bit about their financing plans.
I'm speaking, this is Jared Summiller, I'm the president of the club, and this is Brian Greer. He's an officer here in town, and then he's also on the board.
My question is, is, I mean, I support your program, I, I support this initiative. However, I know we, we voted on this before and it, there was, there was no follow-up apparently on it. So my concern is, is if we vote on this tonight and the city does the work or does the in-kind work or whatever, how are we assured that there's going to be follow-on to, to complete this project and that we won't just walk away from it?
That's a, I understand your concern there. We, we, when we came to you before, we just finished up with the first two pads, which were pretty flat and level. Through fundraising and, and donations, we finished those two pads, the rough grading on those a couple of years ago. And that was fifteen thousand dollars that we paid out of pocket for that. And then right after that, the contractor we had doing the work, his dozer broke down and this, we tried, we, we're waiting for the county to kind of come in and help out too. They said they would, but county's busy with all the county projects that they have. So we have moved on, we're currently working on the last one right now. We've paid out eighty three hundred for a lease of a dozer and it's already been paid for for a month. We have about two and a half weeks left on that lease and about probably two weeks left on the, on the rough grading going right now. And there's another eighty five hundred dollars that we're paying out of pocket on that. So as of right now, everything has pretty much been covered except for the fuel expenses, which is what we came and talked to the council about before. So it's, the work has, has, it hasn't been completed yet, but you know, we're, we're getting close to the end of the completion of the work. A lot of the fuel's been paid for, just reimbursement is what we're looking for on that. And any in-kind support that we can have. But as, as any program that we have around here, there's a lot of small business owners in here, busy local business owners. And it takes a group effort to get anything off the ground and go, and we appreciate everything you do for us. And that's really, it's, you can't, you, we can't deal in certainties because it's a uncertain world. But everything is moving forward and going in the direction we're looking for it to go.
Any other questions?
How much money have you raised?
We have eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars right now that we've raised, which eighty three hundred that we spent on a dozer. This is not including the fifteen thousand, we already paid out for the other two pads. So once we get done with paying the labor on the, the dirt work that's being performed right now, which is another eighty five hundreds, we're setting that sixteen eight hundred, which leaves us with twenty three hundred dollars left in our total budget on, on field development without the reimbursement of.
And I don't know.
Of, of field.
Councilman Pritchard?
So, so that I understand this quickly, you're just at a stage right now to sort of, you're doing the grading work on the fields. Because I saw some information in here about, I think, turf and maintenance on the turf. Is there a plan to purchase or install or whatever the term is on that?
As far as turf goes, we're probably just going to be seeding because if the quote for turf on those four full-size fields, which will be ten, ten soccer fields, is ninety six thousand dollars, I think is what it was. So that's not anywhere in our budget. So we're just looking at growing the turf off the, off the dirt that's out there seeding. And BMAC is donating all of our, all of our pipe for irrigation, all of our pipe, our heads, everything like that. And we had talked with the city about helping out in-kind on that with putting in irrigation for us on that, so.
So if we approve this, this evening, when do you expect to be playing soccer out there?
We expect to be out there next spring, is what we're looking for. It's too late in the season now to be out there in the fall, you know, in order to have turf established like it needs to be.
Okay, I think I have one more question.
Okay.
So on the agenda item, it looks like you're asking for a, a total of eight thousand dollars and some reimbursement on the fuel and in-kind work. Do we know, we have an estimate of how many hours the in-kind work is going to take?
The, I believe the in-kind work was listed as the, the city doing some of the irrigation out there. The eight thousand was up to eight thousand in fuel reimbursement. So it's not a full eight thousand dollars, it's up to eight thousand dollars in whatever fuel is being used out there. It's the way that it was quoted last time, I think, if you look. It may not be worded that way, and if it's not, I shouldn't have said that because you know, the, the money could benefit. But just to be as factual as I can with you on where we're at with everything. Does that answer your question?
Well, kind of, so it's up to eight thousand dollars in fuel and how much in-kind work?
The in-kind work was.
The installation of the irrigation pipe that was being provided by a benefactor.
Donated by benefactor, yes.
Do we have an estimate on how many man-hours that's going to take, person-hours that's going to take?
I'm not sure on that, while I was talking to Fred Edner earlier in the week. And we were going to meet with, with Sherman and Mel and kind of figure all that stuff out. But I don't have that right now. I can get it back to you, though.
Councilman, they do have the grid all laid out for the fields and this stuff goes in very quickly. It is a machine that just basically cuts a nine to twelve inch, twelve inches deep. And you just lay pipe and go, it happens very, very quickly.
Yeah, there's no real science to it other than where the heads, you know, the, the depth of the heads, the rest of it, the water line doesn't matter how deep it is. So they just trench, set the pipe and then attach the heads. And I mean, it's, it's not, it's not as extensive as it sounds.
And it's wide open, so there isn't anything in your way.
No obstruction.
Which is the nice part about it.
I've got, I've got one question, if I don't mind. Jared, on, and I know we talked about this briefly last time you were here, but just out of curiosity, is this enough fields for you guys?
Yes, we, we're operating right now. In the spring, right now, we don't have enough room because in the fall, we can use one of the, one of the baseball fields, my hook hills.
Yeah.
For our younger, for our younger ages. And then we can have a full-size field, one, one full-size field, which is anyone from twelve years old to nineteen, eighteen years old plays on the same size field, which causes a lot of cluster. So in the, in the area we're playing right now, which is thirteen oh one, South Thirteenth, basically, there's not an actual address, but that will bring you GPS coordinates to it. This season, we have all of our full-size teams, we're, we're giving a donation to the high school. We're playing on the high school field on the weekends. So they give us their blackout dates, that they have track meets and that kind of thing, and then we're playing there because we don't have room to play, to set all the fields where we need to set them for the, for the springtime. In the fall time, we can, with the use of that baseball field, we can sit there and we have enough. He's our scheduler for the season, so he gets to juggle games around as far as, okay, we can fit this many this day, we can fit this many this day. So what we have right now with those laid out is we have one of each of those fields. When we go out here to the new, we'll have all, and all of these fields, they'll, they, they wrote it up for us over there and did a really great job. Each of the fields is a full-size pad that we can rotate fields around on so that we don't get these dead areas at the end in front of goals and everything. So there'll be two full-size fields, there'll be, I'll just start at the bottom, there'll be two U six, which is four and five-year-old, two U eight, which is six and seven-year-old, two U ten, which is, you know, is under ten, two U twelve and two U fourteen. And the U fourteen is a full-size enough, so it'll give us ten fields as opposed to the, right now, we're working with, we have two fields there. We have four fields and then we're using the high school field, so, but double the, the capacity that we have right now.
This is why I'm probably asking that more than anything else, maybe this is a question for the city manager too. Is there not some place that we could find in one of our parks to maybe help them out with some more practice fields and things like that? Is that something if we had some space where we could do some things like that and accommodate you guys?
It would, it would definitely help. And we, we spoke about it before and they, they said they'd be accommodating and us practicing in different areas. Like the issue we had, we just came from a practice because we knew we'd be here tonight. And so we were practicing down at Sertoma.
Yeah.
And at five fifteen, I think is what time we ended the practice.
I drive by there often and you guys are all there and then I just.
We're there on the, on the Sertoma end tonight. We were, we were down there at about five, about five twenty, all the boys and girls club, the T-ball's coming in. So we clear out of the way and get done. So it's a juggling act right now, going in the fall, we have the junior high football, the practices there where we practice at. And it's, we make it work, you know, we're going to do everything we can to work with everybody, but it's not feasible the way it is.
Well, I know it's really growing and you guys have done a wonderful job in growing the organization. It's a great thing for the kids in the community, so I, I feel like that's something we could probably figure out.
Councilman, we've been trying to address this problem for years and I think we've actually come up with some solutions and we're actually putting some of those solutions in place right now. We're more addressing the baseball fields, which we hope will help eliminate some of the soccer problems, but it will also allow more soccer fields. We're, right now, we're getting ready to install new backstops at B and Jefferson Park. There's going to be two new backstops there for practice fields because there is a huge need for it. I believe we're installing a, a new backstop at Hutchinson Park in North Town. We're trying to contact the, the ladies or the individuals that have the lease with the city for the girls' club. That is a huge area down there and we want to install soccer nets and baseball backstops down there. And I think we're going to be able to get that accomplished probably this fall. So we're trying to address all those needs and trying to get more utilization of all of our parks here in the city.
Is that something that maybe next council meeting you could have presented to us or maybe we could take a look at that and get something going for them and help them with that?
Certainly, certainly. I mean, B and Jefferson is going forward right now.
Yeah, I just present it to us and then let's pick some parks and, and go with it. I think they've got enough kids and it's enough growing program that we ought to support this.
Okay.
Anything you guys need from us too, size Y, again, anything on that part, feel free to give us.
Thank you, guys.
Let's all work together.
Anybody, any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second to approve item C. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, second Councilman Reed, any further discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all.
We are on to a, the public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business will have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article two, section two one two B of the city charter. Tonight, we have the two, two public hearings. First is public hearing to provide information and answer questions pursuant to sixty-two Oklahoma statute eight five nine B three regarding the proposed adoption. To be located in downtown Main Street area in the city of McAllister. The second is an ordinance of the city council of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, providing for the creation of the local economic advancement and development committee, providing for the purpose, authority, duties of such committee, providing for the membership terms and method of appointment of its general membership, an election of its chairman and declaring an emergency. Take a motion in a second to open a public hearing. Motion, Councilman Reed, second Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. We're now in the public hearing, we'll take them as listed. So the first one will be the one concerning the TIF project.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past several months, the downtown TIF review committee has met and has been developing a project plan that they wanted to bring forward to the council for adoption. This is the first of two public hearings that had to be held as part of the state statutes to qualify for, to adoption of a TIF. This, the TIF review committee has created a, and passed a project plan. The planning, McAllister Planning Commission reviewed it and passed it. They did have a recommendation on the boundary, which we'll discuss later. And we are now forward to the council to, to discuss it. Councilman Pritchard, I can take it if you, if you would prefer or.
Okay.
You're already up there. Okay. This particular project plan looks at the downtown area. The final boundary chosen by the downtown TIF committee, it's, it's essentially bounded on Main Street, on the west side, wind out on the south, Sixth Street on the north and Madison on the, on the, I'm sorry, Madison on the north, wind out to the south. There is a little piece cut out in the top right, we can explain that as well. This project plan calls for several, several items to be tackled, all kind of related to developing the downtown area, whether it be the, the public infrastructure, assisting businesses and development in the downtown area. It does have some specific, sorry, it has specific objectives in helping the McAllister Army ammunition plant. That language was included because there is a state statute that we are trying to see if we might qualify for. If this TIF, TIF is adopted and we do qualify, we actually might be able to get a little money from the state to assist this TIF district as well. So the, the language is included to, to make sure that we're not excluded from the beginning. There's three ways that this TIF is to be funded, it's proposed, sales tax, use tax and ad valorem. It's a twenty-five-year TIF that proposes collecting a hundred percent of the increment of all three of those, all three of those taxes. The intention of this TIF is to be a pay-as-you-go. There is no intention of bonding this debt upfront, so it'd be a slow start and growing over twenty-five years to when it concludes. Project cost is thirty million, it's divided up amongst a few different categories. Public infrastructure improvements is fifteen million, redevelopment, land acquisition, and then assistance for development financing for businesses is five. Some project implementation and administration costs is five hundred thousand. Public school facilities for the McAllister Public School District is five million. Miscellaneous and contingencies is four and a half million for a total of thirty. This downtown TIF review committee, if this TIF is adopted, will continue to serve, continue to exist and will be kind of the screening for the council for projects that want to be undertaken for, for individuals that come forward that would like to participate with the TIF district. They will first pass through the, the TIF review committee to get approval, which they'll come to the McAllister City Council, I guess actually the McAllister Economic Development Authority for final approval. And it does require annual reports. And this, this specific project plan requires a tactical plan, a three-year tactical plan, which has not been completed yet, but would be if it was passed. Unfortunately, I was not able to get this to you in time for the, to get in the packet. But another requirement is, of the, of the TIF is to have an economic development impact analysis. We did one for the highway. It's a twenty-page report, so it's not something we'll probably cover in, in, in full tonight. But since this is just the discussion meeting, we'll, we've got time.
But tonight's, tonight's actually just the informational meeting, the discussion meeting is the next public hearing, as I understand the law.
Okay.
It's just for anyone that has questions about, about the TIF.
Okay. Before this impact analysis, we have, for the highway one, it was a pretty simple process. It required us to kind of look at what was being proposed, the development. We knew where it was happening, we knew what was being built, what the project costs were, what the projected revenue would be. From that, we were able to derive a, a pretty, assuming that those numbers are correct, a pretty, a pretty close impact analysis for the project. The downtown one really didn't have that same ability. There's not a project that's being proposed up front. Councilman, did you? Oh, you did, okay. There's not being a, a project being proposed up front. This is more of a, kind of as it goes, it adapts to what the needs of the community might be. It's a more flexible plan, you might say. But that causes a lot of difficulties when you're trying to estimate what the impact could be. What, the approach we took instead was to look at all three different taxes, sales, use and property, and try to estimate what might be a worst-case scenario and a best-case scenario, a realistic one. You can always assume the worst or assume the best, but we tried to get as close to what might be possible with this TIF district. Again, without a lot of data, we did not have a lot of data to really build these models. So there's a lot of assumptions that are built into it, which makes these, which makes this analysis, take it with caution, try to use it with caution. But for the sales tax considerations, we, we looked at what the city has seen over the past several years, city, citywide. The growth rate for sales taxes from calendar to calendar year was an average of, of point four eight percent, very low. When we looked at the two years of sales tax data we had for the, for the, for the downtown area, not, not just the project area, but a specific area within the, within the TIF. The, the growth rate from year to year was, was actually negative. It was point seven percent from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. Which, when you look at how volatile sales tax is, it seemed consistent. So we used the natural growth of the city as a, as the kind of a worst-case scenario for what this TIF might generate. Best-case scenario, we assumed that the, that the growth. Best-case scenario, we assumed that the, that the growth from year to year would increase, kind of build up on itself and increase over time. We assumed that it would level off at about three percent, which is, I, I feel incredibly aggressive, but I'm always willing to hear other, hear other thoughts on what might be possible. So that kind of helped build our worst and best-case scenarios, the, the natural growth rate, and then kind of building up from the natural growth rate up to three percent. Use taxes, we did not have any data on use taxes for this downtown district, so we really couldn't use the data we needed to produce it. Instead, we tried to find a correlation between sales tax and use tax using a linear regression model. It appears that there is a correlation. Not too surprisingly, when people have more money, they buy more things, both in town and out of town. But for the, for the use tax, since we established a correlation, we pretty much just assigned what the worst and best-case scenarios were for, for sales tax, and then kind of extrapolate, extrapolate, extrapolated that out through use tax. Property taxes, we had a little bit more data. The, the county provided some information, provided all the information of what, of the project area, kind of where they, what the estimated base was. And from there, we kind of looked at their historic growth and what they've seen over the past seven or eight years. Their, their growth is a little, a little better than the city's sales tax growth. In this project area, the property tax growth rate's about three-point-two-three percent. We use that as the worst-case scenario. We assume that if all else fails, that the growth rate will continue. For the best-case scenario, we had to get a little more creative. We actually looked at sales, at tax rolls for the property taxes and saw where there were instances of major property tax assessment value increases and estimated how many of those we might see in a given year. So looking at a best-case scenario for the property taxes, we used the maximum growth rate allowable in the district and included some of those large projects potentially coming in. I don't want to go through all of it with you. I will just kind of summarize the benchmarks, the very last page, on what we've, what we looked at when we, under our assumptions. We broke it down in five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five-year increments to kind of see how it builds over time. Looking at the, the twenty-five-year estimate, kind of worst-case and best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, the, the natural growth that we see in the city, if it continues in this, in the TIF district, does not have any additional impact. Over a twenty-five-year period, this TIF could collect one-point-six million dollars, almost one-point-seven million. A pretty low amount. It would, it would really require some growth to see, to see any additional come in. Best-case scenario, we're assuming a three-percent sales tax growth. We're assuming a four-point-five-percent property tax growth with some additional growth coming in. We're assuming use tax to be correlated with sales tax. We see a nine-point-nine-million-dollar impact, or I guess a gathering by this TIF over a twenty-five-year period. Again, it's a really wide range. There's a lot of variables involved. It's, it's not a particularly easy thing to estimate when you don't have a, when you don't have a project up front knowing what it could do. I'm certainly willing to look at other ways to consider best and worst-case scenarios. There's a lot of things that could potentially happen, which are included in the, in the impact analysis that I did not include because there's really not a way for me to estimate it. So this is kind of a first draft, and I'm willing to change it as necessary to try to get the best reflection possible. But any questions regarding the?
Well, I'm gonna, since it's a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up to the public first and see if anyone in the, anyone in the audience has any questions about the TIF. And then seeing no one, as far as the council goes, keep in mind, this is, this is the, this isn't the discussion of the merits of the TIF or anything like that. It's questions that's specific to the TIF, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So any questions? All right, seeing none, I take a motion in a second to, well, we'll go to the, the second public hearing. I forgot that one. So this will be the public hearing on the, the lead committee. So anyone, anyone from the public that would like to address the council concerning the, it's the Economic Development Committee. Seeing no one, I would take a motion in a second to close the public hearings. Motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? Cora, do you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, well, we just did item number three. So we're on to item number four. Consider an act upon an ordinance of the City Council of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, providing for the creation of a Local Economic Advancement and Development Committee, providing for the purpose, authority, and duties of such committee, providing for the membership terms, method of appointment, and general membership, and election of its chairman, declaring an emergency. I'm going to, I'm gonna pitch it to you, Councilman Richard.
Okay. This was on the agenda, I don't remember when, maybe a month and a half ago now. We did a little bit of discussion. There were some different thoughts in the room about some tweaks to the committee. I have struggled to come up with language that I felt good about as amendments to my original proposed committee. So I put the agenda item back on, or put the item back on the agenda tonight for this council to take action on, hopefully with the language I've adopted, or not adopted, but proposed. But I'm certainly still open to suggestions for the committee.
Would you, would you just summarize the, because it's been the?
Yeah, it's been a while. Sorry. So the lead committee is a nine-member committee. It would be, it was currently proposed comprised of seven members, what we call, I believe the term is citizen members. They're either citizens of the city of McAllister or people that are, work for an organization that regularly does business in the city of McAllister. Those seven members would be determined, each member of this council would get to select one member to serve on the committee. In addition to those seven members, one member of this council would be appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by the council to serve on the committee. And then the city manager would get to designate a city staff member that could be the city manager themselves to serve on the committee. The idea, the purpose, rather, of the committee, which is summed up in section two of the proposed ordinance, is to really do three things, is to evaluate the current community and economic development policies and ordinances of the city. And then is to look for opportunities that are financially sustainable, economic growth, opportunities from organizations located in the city of McAllister, currently located in the city of McAllister, or organizations that are early-stage growth or startup companies that are interested in locating to the city of McAllister. So the general idea here is that we, you know, we have a limited economic development staff to start with, unlimited resources there, but probably the most limiting thing is time. And, you know, with that time, the current staff has to make decisions about what projects to pursue. And I think that typically causes the staff, and this is very rational, causes the staff to pursue larger-scale projects. And there's lots of smaller opportunities, specifically, I think, with local companies, local organizations, that get missed. And so the idea here is we're going to create a broad-based committee, and that's part of the reason for council appointment. For every council member getting to a point, we're going to create a broad-based section of the community to get out there, tap into their networks, uncover some opportunities, to help us do some economic development stuff. If you read much into this area, I mean, some of the largest gains that communities can get are from, you know, small growing companies. And so, you know, oftentimes, those opportunities that just may be overlooked by our current, you know, current approach could really be the most beneficial for us. We currently have in the city, I forgot the number, the city manager may have to help me out. How many dollars in economic development?
Available right now? It's about a million. What is, what is the balance of economic development?
Which we have a million that is dedicated for defense purposes. And we probably have a million and a half, maybe closer to two towards a non-dedicated.
And I'm certainly not proposing we spend all that, but we have a sizable amount of money that we could, you know, get into our, get into our community and potentially help some people create some jobs, create some wealth, create some prosperity. This committee, the proposed committee, the lead committee, would have no authority to spend money. They would have to, and this is in section, detailed in section three a little bit. Yeah, section three. But the committee, you know, finds the opportunities, develops the opportunities, reports the opportunities to this council, who has the ultimate authority to, you know, to decide to spend money or not. So that's the general framework and the idea behind the proposed ordinance.
The, the additional page that's in here, the last page, is, is what my, my concept of how the committee should be made up is coming from, it's the same, essentially the same, except we would, there would be somewhat a member from finance, a member from education, a member from defense, small business, industry, medical, and the Chamber of Commerce, plus two at-large city members. And the reason for that is, kind of ties into what Councilman Richard was saying, that we want people that are, that can identify these things and can, can move on these things and know, have access to information that our economic developer may, development director may not have. So it's, it's, I, it's, I think the, the committee is a great idea. I just think that we need the most professional people that we can get on it, on it. And I, and that's not saying that we would all pick bad people if we go the other way. I just, these, these people are already in the business and would be willing to serve on it. So any other questions, Councilman Smith?
I want to thank you, Zach, for taking the initiative on this, your work on it. But I really think on section three, item one, it would be in a more effective committee if we pick people from these areas. The only difference I have with that, that page to whom it might concern is I would be implying to have each sector submit names and then perhaps have the mayor pick from each sector and submit them to the council for approval.
I'd be fine with that. Nice move, Stephen.
Councilman Richard, thank you. I think this is a very well-written ordinance, and I appreciate you taking the time to do it because it's something I, I've gotten since I've been on council. And quite frankly, the reason I ran for council is I feel that more people in our community should have a voice. The, the only thing that I would really want to change is that we just approve the ordinance as it is. Not that these people here, that what you've wrote in here, Mayor, are bad or opposed to doing good in the community or things like that, but I feel that, quite frankly, our greatest asset here is our people. And by restricting it, it does cause an issue. And I think that we've got a wonderful economic development staff. I think they do a great job, and they've shown that time and time again, especially with Kirk, with what you brought this evening. But I look at it and I think that, quite frankly, just with what his time is and what he can do, he needs people that can help him. In my job, every day, I show people houses or I show them buildings, and they look for businesses, and, and they do that. And I can quite frankly tell you, the best people at doing that are people that are not involved in any of these probably sectors here that we're talking about. They do a wonderful job of knowing what's on, going on in the community because they're able to point out that, well, this person here does a little bit of business with me here, or this person here, I, I help or I babysit their children, and they do this, and they have a very good pulse on what's going on in the community. And from what I understand, and feel free to correct me, Councilman, if I'm wrong, Mr. Richard, that this is really for finding what's locally here in McAllister, and then bringing those, maybe there's some very small incremental approaches that we could take to Mr. Ridenhour. And I think by limiting our organization to people that are just in these sectors, that, not to say that they wouldn't be doing the same things every day, but maybe they're looking at the same projects that Mr. Ridenhour is already doing, maybe that the man, city manager is already involved in. By having these people here that we appoint, that we know, and that, quite frankly, they might be out of every one of these sectors, and we appoint them already as councilmen, might be very true. But I think the idea of restricting it or bringing it back in in other terms than that is just something I think that we should not support. Because I think at the same time is that there's a reason that we were elected. And quite frankly, if we applied this criteria to us as councilmen, there's several of us councilmen that could not serve in a lot of this. So I, I think, yeah, I think that's. No, but I know that I have to make a payroll, and I know Mr. Richard does too. We've had to do those things. But that doesn't mean I'm the most qualified from anybody in here. That is far from the truth. That just means I might do it more poorly at times. So I just think that leaving and voting in the ordinance that's here, I think, is a good decision.
Mayor, I kind of, I agree with you and Councilman Smith. The way I read the ordinance, and I agree with, I don't have any problem with it, with forming this committee. But I, I do think that, in my view, one of the purposes of doing it is to bring experts together that can put these type of projects together, that can give professional advice to people who are asking questions, that want to bring business to McAllister. And I'm not so sure you can always do that with, with people that, that are just, that don't have this, this type of background. I know from experience, it's hard to find people to serve on these boards and committees anyway, and to find people who, the Audit Finance Committee is an example of that. It's hard to find people that, that bring expertise that, to the table, that are willing to serve. And to me, one of the purposes of this committee is to bring those type of people that are listed here, all together in one room to further this project.
Councilman Richard?
So Councilman Stevens brought this up. But, and this was one of the issues I had with trying to, you know, go off this sort of list of, we'll call them experts, is, I mean, you know, somebody similar to, to yourself, to the mayor, doesn't fit. I don't think you fit in any of these categories, but you or somebody, and there's people, you know, like the mayor throughout this community that have, you know, a lot of, has a very wide network, and there's a lot of people that could certainly be engaged in this process. And I don't want to exclude those people, you know, because, and I think that we're all going at the same, we're trying to solve the same problem, which is, how do you get the best committee, the most skilled committee, the most expert committee? And the question, though, is, you know, sort of how do we define that? And from my perspective, and, and also, I think it's important to understand that the sort of scope of this committee is relatively limited. You know, I mean, this isn't, these are a lot of times going to be relatively small projects that this committee would be in charge of. I mean, this is, I don't think should be our exhaustive approach to economic development. So when we get, we begin to think about what is an expert for this committee or what is a qualified person for this approach, I think it is less, you know, the president of the bank and more the person that knows a bunch of people in their neighborhood. And, and again, that's one of the reasons I wanted it to be every council member. I considered, every council member gets an appointment. I considered a provision that would have required that person to be from that council member board, and ultimately decided that was too restrictive. But hopefully, by, you know, getting every council member to appoint somebody, we're going to create a, even some geographical, you know, diversity to this committee. And, you know, maybe I get more comments on this. I mean, I, you know, ran for election relatively recently. But also, prior to that, in my business with the economic development deal I did with the council before my time on council, I get quite a few people who come up to me and, you know, engage around this economic development idea. And a lot of those are, are small opportunities or small businesses or, you know, things that could get larger but are pretty small. And, and I also think, you know, taking some of those ideas to people that we typically think of as experts. So again, you know, I think president of the bank, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, something like that. I just think there could be a, a, I don't know that those people, if we appoint them, that caliber person, if we point to this committee, is going to be engaged enough or interested enough in the type of opportunities that we're really trying to find here in this community. You know, there's already a lot of opportunities for people of that, of, you know, people to be engaged, if it's a Chamber of Commerce, if it's in, in other organizations. So, you know, and I think with all this being said, regardless of which way we go about selecting people, the truth is, we are probably going to end up with close to the same group of people. You know, I mean, I think, I think we're probably going to, if, if we adopt the ordinance as I've proposed, I think we're going to end up with a list that's pretty similar to the list of, of sort of industries that the mayor has proposed. But we're going to take away the ability to appoint people not on that list.
It would be, I would just make one correction to, to both Mr. Richard and Mr. Stevens. There would be two at-large members, so anyone, anyone would fill, would fit into those, those propositions. Councilman Smith?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this proposal. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this proposal with the, uh, change that will select the, uh, membership on the committee according to whom you may concern and, uh, change that so that when you receive nominations, that you ultimately pick one from each sector and submit it for the council.
Is there a second? Second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Corrigan, call her, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Mr. Stacey?
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor, um, we're excited about having this additional help to help us with our economic development program going forward. Uh, one thing that I would like to, uh, remind everybody at the council is when you are engaging, uh, with your constituents, the people in your, in your communities, when you hear about ideas, keep in mind that the city funds half of the salary of a small business developments, uh, center individual who is an expert in working with small businesses and building business plans and those type of things. So if you, if you hear of that, those things, let us know so that we can get them involved. Uh, that person is housed here in, here in the city at E O S C. So it's a great opportunity for all of us. Okay?
I want to tack on to that because I did have a small business owner tell me that, uh, he did not feel like he would be in business if it was not for the work of that small, of the, uh, just blank under name.
Henry, Henry and Dana.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, this has an emergency with it, didn't it?
Part of the discussion on the emergency clause, I, I don't understand how this qualifies for, for emergency.
We're gonna have to ask for a minute, Mr. Pritchard.
Well, it's whether or not you want it to go immediate in the
Well, I mean, there's a requirement for meeting the emergency, and it doesn't have to affect the
Mainly, it's recital in the, uh, emergency clause. They determine that, that go into effect immediately for those purposes. It doesn't have to, you construct the emergency clause.
Well, I mean, that's the question, this house is qualified as an emergency. Just, just because we want to do it right now?
Mainly.
It is going to take some time to get the letter out and get to, get responses from it. So, I mean, I don't have any problem if we don't do an emergency, but it is, Mr. Pritchard, I'll, I'll leave it up to you.
Well, I believe if, uh, Councilman Reed votes no, it will fail anyway. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it up to Councilman Reed.
In that case, uh, do we have to vote to not do an emergency since it is on the agenda?
I'd strike the vote, uh, second motion to strike the emergency clause.
Is there a motion to do so? Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Corrigan, call her, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda, item number five, presentation and discussion of fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. Mr. Stacey?
Thank you, Mayor.
We are.
While that's warming up, I've got some, uh, pretty interesting news for you, some good news. Uh, we did get our sales tax return for, uh, our April return. Things are continuing to show great improvement here at the city. Uh, right now, we are currently nine point seven three percent ahead of last year's, uh, collections for sales tax, almost one point two million dollars. That's a huge number. Our, our community continues to grow, uh, quickly. Use tax year-to-date is ahead seven point nine nine, almost eight percent ahead of last year. So I'm proud tonight to, uh, present our annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. As usual, um, this is a, we are presenting a balanced budget, which we are required by law, and with this budget also maintains a minimum reserve of ten percent, minimum reserve of 10% in our emergency fund. Uh, first and foremost, I have to thank the staff. Without the staff putting this together, uh, we would not be where we're at today. They've done a phenomenal job. Ann Chen, who is our new CFO, has stepped forward and really, um, embraced this budget, helped us tremendously with it. Uh, all of the input from Tony Urban and all of the directors have had a huge input in this budget. It's definitely been a, a team, team process to put all of this information together. Our annual sales tax, um, I wanted to show you a trend line of what's been happening for the last, uh, six years and what we are proposing for 2019, 2020 budget. 2019, 2020 budget, we are proposing, uh, an increase of about one, $140,000 over 2018, 2019. You have to ask yourself, why are we continually proposing higher annual sales tax budgets? We are at a, the highest level of employment we've ever seen here at the city in McAllister. Uh, this is attributable to the Army ammunition plant, Spirit Aero Systems, Choctaw Defense, and their growing of their projectile system. The oil and gas industry, uh, oil was at $64 a barrel today. It continues to increase. Uh, gas prices are increasing dramatically. It's attributable to the growth of Krebs Brewing. And what we are seeing going forward is several hundred jobs that are still available and unfilled at the ammunition plant, and the Choctaw Defense has re-engaged, uh, their 22 ammunition plant. They are hiring engineers as we speak, and by the end of the year, we'll have that plant up and running, have 95 new employees. So we see nothing but growth and great opportunity and potential for the city in the next year. Our sales tax, uh, we are projected based on what our returns are for 10 months to collect $8,385,000. Our proposed budget for 2019, 2020 is $8,584,000, so about $199,000. Our use tax is got a dramatic increase in it, and we're going to be very, very cautious with our use tax. The use tax has $650,000 of use tax, uh, attributable to the shopping center. So we're going to watch that very closely, uh, take it very cautiously, and once the trigger is pulled on that shopping center, then we'll be starting to invest that money in our community. So sales tax does have a 4% increase in it over the, the prior year. Give you a trend line on our annuals use tax, uh, gives you an indication of the last six years and where we're heading with 2019, 2020. You know, a lot of this is contributed, is, is contributed both to, uh, online sales and what we're seeing here at the community. It's interesting that not only are our online sales and use tax growing incrementally, incrementally, so is our sales tax revenue. I want to give you a little picture of the general, uh, fund budget, and what I want to really focus here, so that you understand, is this the operation expenditure side of it? It is not, don't confuse this with new construction. This is operation and maintenance. Um, as you can see, $1.3 million for streets, facility maintenance, and also our fleet maintenance. It isn't up there. Community services, parks, swimming pools, recreation, cemetery, 1.5 million. Administration and planning, little over $2 million, which is all the, uh, people that operate out of this, uh, this building. Our police department proposed budget is $4,167,000. Uh, one thing I do want to point out on that $4.1 million on the police, we've had a cops grant that's been in place for three years. That cops grant expires at, at June 30th of this year. Our intent is to move forward with those three officers and keep them on staff and on payroll. That $4.1 million includes those three, three individuals. Our fire department, $3,546,000. This is fire and EMS. Uh, one side note is, uh, our union negotiations with fire and police are going very, very well. I think we have orally agreed to, uh, some conceptual ideas to bring to this council, and I think you'll be seeing that in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be making those changes to the contracts and bringing that information forward to, to you guys. One thing about the operating budget for all personnel, which includes police, fire, and non-uniform employees, in this budget, we do have a 2% cost of living increase for all employees. Our preliminary budget for MPWA, our McAllister Public Works Authority, uh, we're increasing the water sales about $100,000. District, uh, is minimal. Our sewer increase is about another $100,000. Overall, we're looking at about a $220,000 increase. This is mostly contributed to annual increases that, uh, are in our ordinance for water and sewer sales. So that's what we're looking at here. We don't see any new developments on the horizon other than the shopping center. We don't see any housing, um, subdivisions or those type of, uh, uh, projects coming forth in the, in the upcoming year. Our MPWA fund budget, uh, our operating expenditures, 31% of the budget is for refuse collection. That is our republic services contract. Out of the $2 million expended out of, out of refuse collection, 1.9 or almost $2 million of it is republic services and the collection of our trash. 11% is our wastewater treatment. That is for the operation of the East and West Plant. 19% is utility maintenance. Uh, that is our water and sewer lines and all, uh, all structures associated with it. 22% is our water treatment. Out of our water treatment, Infomark, who is the operator of our water plant, is $1,353,000 of it, so the bulk of it. We will be coming forward at the next council meeting with a recommendation, uh, for Infomark's contract moving forward. Uh, that contract is up as of June 30th of this year. Uh, their five-year commitment is completed. Our utility billing is 9%, 7% engineering, and 1% landfill. If you have any questions, feel free to interrupt as we're going through this. We don't have to wait till the end. Moving forward, uh, we are maintaining the same level of participation in the budget for all of our funding agencies outside the city. Um, item number two is the Small Business Development Center that we just talked about. I would encourage you, as you're, as you're working with your, uh, friends, your neighbors, your colleagues out in the community, get them involved with SBDC. I think they're a tremendous asset that we have here at the city. Uh, a new partnership would be Pittsburgh County Child Advocacy. Uh, they are requesting $4,500 for recording equipment. Evidently, their recording equipment is just about had it. I want to point out, the Defense Consultant Services, that's MDSS, uh, that is a decrease of 15%. They, MDSS has done a tremendous job in going out and getting community partners, and that's reflected in this year's budget by a decrease of a little over 15%. Bringing the community partnerships to $246,000. Couple areas of, uh, expenditures that I want to point out, our nutrition fund continues to grow in, in costing the city. Uh, at one time, when this started out, about 90% of it was paid for by grants. Now, a very small percentage of it is paid by grants. The rest of it is, uh, expenditures that are funded through general fund and MPWA. Yes, sir.
Can you explain what the nutrition fund is and why the grants?
It is. Um, the nutrition fund is a, is a federal program administered by the state, and that's to feed our seniors. It's to feed, uh, underprivileged or low-income individuals in our community. Uh, to give you an idea, we serve approximately 4,200 meals per month at, at the Stipe Center. Those are seniors that come in and participate, uh, Monday through Friday. And every day, we deliver about 116 meals to people that really can't get out of their homes and have no opportunity, uh, to come to the Stipe Center. So we're, we're doing a tremendous amount of meals here.
Is the matter of it, the expenditures increase because we're feeding that much more people?
It is. It's an expensive program.
So how many people?
The food is paid for, uh, through a grant. But we pay for the employees, we pay for the facilities, the utilities, the delivery, the delivery people, uh, basically everything to provide those meals.
So the facilities, that would be the Stipe Center?
It is the Stipe Center.
That's what the maintenance of the Stipe Center is reflected in?
Some of the maintenance, some of the maintenance of the Stipe Center, not all of it. It's the, it's the kitchen area and the areas that we utilize for preparing the meals, and also the area where they dine.
What percentage of that do you think is reflected in that?
Oh, it's the, the bulk of that wing. Um, you know, half of that building is probably a gymnasium or a little more than half. I would say the other 50%, 35 to 40% of it would be the nutrition program.
Thank you, Mr. Stacey. Would the, uh, the Kiowa Center also be included in that?
It is. We have about 20 meals that we provide at the Kiowa Center, and that's delivered from the Stipe Center over to Kiowa. Yes, good point, Mayor. Our airport, um, right now, our revenue is about $102,000. I have some great news for you. Uh, we did the final walkthrough on the revenue, or on the airport last Thursday. There is a small punch list at that airport. That new $4.2 million runway is up and open. It is striped. It is magnificent, and it's going to serve this community for the next 25, 30, 35 years. Uh, it's something that's been needed for a long time, and it is completed. So it's a great asset for our community. Uh, our expenditure is about $234,000. Uh, Kirk is working right now, uh, in renting the CID building, which is next to our terminal. The CID building, uh, those individuals have now moved to the federal building on the third floor. It has left that building unoccupied, and we have a tenant that is interested in, in renting that, and we're working through the preliminary lease agreements and details right now. We hope to be bringing that to the council here in the very near future. Uh, in addition to that, he's also working with a data center, uh, the FAA building, which is a 10,000 square foot facility. As you're coming into the airport on the right-hand side, uh, we have a, a data company that has reached out to us. We've said all along that that building is absolutely perfect for a data center because it's got an elevated floor, and all you have to do is pull up those tiles, and you can install all the cabling that you need in the runners underneath. So it is really ideal for a data center. So we're hoping that that comes together for us. So a couple of good opportunities there for, in the future. I want to point out, uh, back when we refinanced our bonds, which was four or five years ago, it was over a couple of years period of time, one of the things that we anticipated when we set up those repayments was a growth of 1% per year of sales tax, of the one, of the one-set sales tax. That was going to take care of that, uh, those increase in payments. Well, that never came to be. So for the last three years, you can see that we've had to subsidize those, those bonds out of the MPWA by 300, 400, and then $500,000. Well, this year, because of what we are, what we've seen sales tax-wise and what we are projecting for the future, that $509,000 number, uh, decreases to about $250,000. So we are So we are working that number back towards zero. I want to make a correction on the three numbers down below. That should be sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what our projection is for nineteen, twenty. Councilman, you asked for a graph on our injuries. Here's your graph. Personnel and benefits for the upcoming year, benefits all remain the same. And I hate to do this for our employees, but we are proposing to move away from United Health, who we went to last year, and move back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. There's a couple of reasons associated with that. United Health, when they came and gave us our, their proposal for this year, it was a five percent increase over what, what our, what our costs were for this year. And they were unwilling to budge off of that. Blue Cross Blue Shield has come in, kept the deductibles, the co-pays, pharmacies, everything at the same level and is offering a four percent decrease. So it's a nine percent swing, which is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars to the city of McAllister. So our proposal going forward is to move back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. They are also offering a fifty thousand dollar wellness program to the city of McAllister.
I have a question. When we had Blue Cross and Blue Shield prior, they, they changed essentially the name of the plan and put it in a situation where our employees couldn't use our local hospital. Is that going to be an issue going forward?
Mayor, I can't remember if it was preferred or choice, but we've already checked that out. It is in network with our local hospital. Okay? Tony, is it preferred or choice?
Preferred.
Thank you. We have a very aggressive program. You know, our injuries was, this was something that we identified as a huge problem early on. And there were a couple of years in oh nine, ten and eleven, because we're self-insured. We were spending seven hundred thousand dollars on medical bills, operations, settlements, all of those type of things. And I'll tell you, Sean Smith started this program, I think in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven and really embraced the idea that we needed to make sure that each and every one of our employees went home at night the same way they came to work. And through her efforts and then subsequently the last four or five years with Doug Basenger, through education and awareness, our employees have just embraced safety. And it is something that's taken a long time to turn around. But I can tell you that this year is probably going to be one of our lowest years. And we're probably only going to spend about a hundred and sixty or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And some of this stuff is cleaning up from the past. In this budget, we have proposed a safety program for our employees. It is funded in this budget and it is being funded through workman's comp savings and also our health insurance savings. We really want to make that push to the final end where we are at zero accidents on an annual basis. That's a, that's a lofty goal when you have two hundred and twenty-five employees. But until we get there, I won't be satisfied. I can't, I came out of the private industry and I can tell you this is totally unacceptable in private industry. And I know that we can get to a point where we are accident-free. These guys have done, Doug and Sean both have just done a tremendous job with this program. So we gave you your trend line. It's a good trend line. This budget increases full-time regular employees from two hundred and twenty-three to two hundred and twenty-five. What we're asking for is a clerical floater. This is an individual that can float around the entire city when we have administrative assistants, clerical people in our billing office, anybody that needs a hand from somebody being, calling in sick, being on vacation, holidays, those type of things. This person will be an expert in everything and be able to go around the city and help out anywhere that we can. The other thing that we are requesting is changing the stormwater engineer from a part-time to a full-time employee. With the number of projects that we have going with our star, stormwater program, with the funding that we have available. And in addition to that, we have the preliminary stormwater master plan that's on my desk right now that we are reviewing that we will be bringing forth to this council in the very near future. That plan has about twenty-two million dollars worth of new construction in it. And let, and that's just new construction. That's not the maintenance of the existing facilities that we have. Right now, that stormwater plan generates about eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars per year. And we need a full-time individual to manage this. Yes, sir.
What is the cost difference between a part-time and full-time?
Cliff was about thirty hours. We were paying him plus benefits. It's an additional ten hours plus benefits. So you're looking at twenty-five times ten. Not a lot of money, about two hundred, that's not right, twenty-five dollars. He, okay, per month, about a thousand, about twelve hundred dollars per month. Additional cost, so about fourteen thousand dollars per year. Good question.
That'll be completely funded out of the stormwater fee?
It is not. We do not fund personnel or benefits out of the stormwater fee. The stormwater fee has always been been maintenance, materials and supplies in the ground. We have never done that and we don't intend to do it. Okay?
Just to give a, just to give a little clarification that our stormwater engineer is, he was retired and he came back to help us out and he's going back into retirement. So it's not, it's not moving somebody up, it will be a new employee.
It will be a new employee. Cliff has given his resignation and will be retiring at the end of this month.
Pete, on the police, you, you mentioned that we got three officers there currently being paid on a grant. They're coming off the grant.
Yes, sir.
We're not holding three positions back, not filling them, are we? Or are we filling all of our police positions?
We are filling all employee positions and, which includes the three. Okay, so when you look at police, where we were before was probably fifty-nine employees. If you looked at CID and all, all aspects of it, we are fully funding and, and putting in place sixty-two people.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that, that we're not just having sixty-two FTEs, that we're actually filling sixty-two FTEs.
We have sixty-two FTEs.
Okay. Why are we losing one out of the fire department?
That was a negotiation.
Yeah, we, what we did is we had negotiated another employee and, and we did this through negotiations last year. Several years ago, we negotiated an additional employee in lieu of a three percent raise. Well, we never got that, that department fully funded. So through last year's negotiations with this council, agreed to is we, we dropped that one FTE and gave everybody a three percent pay increase on top of what, everything else. Or gave everybody an additional step on top of what we did last year for everybody. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Which, it just seemed like through turnover, we could just never get to fully, fully staffed. So it made sense to go ahead and, and make that change. Any other questions? Thanks, Tony. Okay, here's the fun stuff. And keep in mind, this is, this is our proposal. This can change this, you know, as things happen here at the city, we make adjustments. And, you know, you're probably looking at item number one going, why a fire engine? Why is that coming forth so quickly? A couple of years ago, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of getting all of our equipment maintained and certified the way it needed to be maintained and certified. Unfortunately, when you're running twenty-five-year-old equipment, no matter the fact that it's, you know, doesn't have ten thousand miles on it or fifteen thousand miles on it, it's twenty-five years old. Electronics are failing. We have a fire engine down right now because of electronics problems. They are trying to bypass that system. We're seeing more and more and more things come forward with these, with these fire trucks. As you can imagine with a twenty-five-year-old piece of equipment. A fire engine doesn't cost a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. A fire engine costs about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The hundred and sixty-six comes from our capital. We have money in our county fund for fire that can be used for equipment. And then we also have some contingency money. So if we determine that we need to move forward with this fire truck over the next couple of years, it will be funded with three different avenues of funding to get us to the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have a dump truck remount. Our ten-wheel dump trucks are two thousand and seven trash trucks. These are, these had Packers on them that were purchased in two thousand and seven. We took the Packers off and we put demolition beds and made them into dump trucks. Well, those trucks are aging now, they're twelve years old. That is a cabin chassis. The bed itself is still in great shape. We'll take it off the truck, put it on the new truck and move on down the road. So that's what that is. Animal control truck, it's the kind of a hundred and fifty-six thousand miles on it. I don't know what else to tell you. Ambulance remount, we did that successfully this year. We have another one that needs to be done and that's going to get us in pretty good shape. But we were able to do a cabin chassis with a box remount on that for about sixty thousand dollars. And it has worked out perfectly for us. It has worked out very, very well. Fortunately, that will be used on the fire truck if we need it. Reoccurring payments, we just, we just leased four new police cars. An annual payment's twenty-two thousand dollars. We have fleet maintenance payments. Those are trucks that were purchased in, in the past years. The MCC controls, I think we're in year three of that on five years of payments of fifty-six thousand dollars. Our water tower project. This is dropped, what you've seen in the past is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every year. But that included the initial cleaning and painting of those towers. That has now been completed. Okay, all of that money's been paid back. The one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is maintenance and future painting of those towers, the six towers that we currently have. Streets and UTM dump truck payments, that is two six-wheel dumps that were purchased a couple of years ago and one new ten-wheel dump. And then our automated meter, water meter program, which we're in year two of a million-dollar loan. We talked a minute about stormwater funding, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for canal wall replacement. We have two hundred and ten thousand dollars remaining to pay on our master drainage program that will be completed here. As I talked about earlier, our capital outlay, which is new construction. This is not maintenance, this is new construction, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. We have stormwater projects, which are maintenance of about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And street sweeper payments, which are ongoing, we're in year three of thirty-nine thousand dollars. We have a number of stormwater projects that are underway right now. We have about six hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that are in the pipeline going forward. To give you an indication, we had a pre-construction meeting on Indiana Avenue that you guys approved previously. That's a seventy-eight thousand dollar project. We have the projects down on Sonja Way. There's one on the, on the drainings and there's one on the drainage of the canal back behind Sonja Way. That's a tremendous problem to us. So there's a number of projects that are already ongoing. These are new projects in the upcoming year. Our infrastructure fund, based on the projections of our increase in sales tax, we estimate there's going to be two million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the upcoming year. We intend to fund seven hundred and five thousand dollars for the street reconstruction project of Washington from Fifth to Sixth Street. That includes the roundabout at Fifth Street. A hundred thousand dollars in concrete panel replacement. That will probably be done by a contractor. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in asphalt overlay program. We have increased that from this year, an additional hundred thousand dollars. To give you an idea what that will buy is that's about thirty-five blocks of asphalt. That's on average a three hundred foot block. So we, we're, we have every intention of spending all of that money on asphalt overlays this year. We have a hundred thousand dollars on a crack ceiling program. That will probably come through a state contract to a contractor here in town. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the rehab of the West Water Plant. And I know you guys can read, but these are exciting projects. We want you to get an idea that we are moving this city forward. That's going to be to clean our basins. We haven't cleaned our basins since I've been here. What that's going to do is that's going to give each one of those plants additional capacity. So by cleaning those basins, we're going to be able to add to that, to that capacity. Yeah, it's not a job I want to do either. Okay? Hundred thousand dollars on the UPS lift station. That's just continuing on-go improvements and maintenance on those lift stations. Sixty-five thousand dollars in water line replacement. It's not much money for water line replacements, but I want you to understand what we're doing is when we have a leak, we're not putting clamps on them. Okay, we're utilizing that money to fix long stretches. Okay, if, if we know that the city's been on that street multiple times, we're digging up the entire street and replacing that water line. So that's long runs of, of blocks of water lines. Sewer line replacement, this is the final stage of Connolly addition. Two hundred thousand dollars will complete the entire Connolly addition for new sewer lines. That's huge. That is a big deal for the city. Hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for our facilities. We need a roof on the Stipe Center. We've got to get City Hall painted and the library needs to be painted. And then a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in contingencies. I want to make a statement here because a lot of the things that you see and a lot of the conversations that we've had in the past is what are replacement costs for this city? And do we have a plan for replacement costs? And when we talk about replacement costs, we're talking about equipment, sewer lines, water lines and streets. Two million dollars isn't a replacement program to fix this city. This is going to require new funding streams and it's probably going to, it needs to increase the existing funding. Over the next two to four weeks, we're going to start working on replacement plans for this city and start getting a better handle on what areas needing media detention and improvements and what it's going to take to actually make those improvements and move this city forward. This is the presentation. I hope that you guys will digest it. Write down your questions. We intend to have a joint city council audit finance workshop in the future with a public hearing. And then we are required to have this budget approved seven days before the end of the fiscal year. We've got a lot of time here. It was important to me and the staff that we got this in your hands early on because there's a lot of information, a lot of improvement, a lot of good things happening for this city going forward. And we hope to get all of your input on it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right, we will move on to new business. Any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the, in the agenda in accordance with section three-one-one point nine title, twenty-five Oklahoma State statutes. Mr. Stacey, do we have any new business?
We do not, Mayor.
In that case, we'll move on to city manager's report.
Just to give everybody a heads up, I know it's sitting in front of you, but we have a special meeting Thursday at five-thirty. That's to address the CIP and also the vacancy that's been established. So that'll be Thursday at five-thirty. I'm really excited about this. One of the things that Stephanie is I'm really excited about this. One of the things that Stephanie has jumped into the middle with, with our IT department and some of the other department heads is we are looking at redoing our website right now and redesigning that website. It needs to be refreshed. It needs to be more interactive. So I'm excited about that. In conjunction with Stephanie and our grant writer, we just received an OMAG grant for two thousand dollars for trench block, blocks for the safety of our MPWA workers, the people that work on the water and sewer lines, and they have to go down in those holes. Those trench boxes are what protects them from the sides falling in. And talk to you about the airport, and that's all I got, Mayor.
We'll move to remarks and inquiries by the council. Councilman Smith?
I wanted to thank Bryden McAllister again for, they started their spring cleanup this last weekend at the Armory. They're very efficient at getting people through, but the line was about two blocks long in pickups when I got there that they moved relatively quick. They're having pickups every weekend for the rest of this month. And that's on Saturday, what, nine to three, and Sunday, twelve to three. And on the twenty-seventh, they're picking up hazardous household waste and, what else? Paper shreddings being done and prescription drugs, so.
And electronics, and electronics.
And electronics, yeah. Good deal.
That's my team. Councilman Reed? Councilman Richard?
I just, on the TIF thing, we've already had the hearing. But I believe the statute requires us to announce the second hearing date at this meeting. And I believe some will correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to have it at the next council meeting, which is, what is the next council meeting?
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third of this one. Just as a, just so we meet that definition. That's all I have.
So we will make the formal announcement then, that we will have that on the next agenda on the twenty-third. Our mayor's comments and committee appointments. Just a couple of things. We, we all have to do our ethics training. The Ethics Board hit me up on that and asked that I would remind everyone that we do it so they don't have to come down here and embarrass us and tell us that we have to do it. So it's, it can be done online. Contact Cora, and she can, she can put you in the area that needs to be done. We also have the city manager evaluations that whenever you guys get them done, get them back to me, and I will, I will impose on Councilman Smith to compile them for us as he's done in the past, and then we will have an executive session and go over them. And then lastly, I had a citizen today approach me who has a developmentally disabled son. His name is Major, and there was a little misunderstanding in the park yesterday, and we had officers Bedford and Knave were called and came to the park and handled it tremendously well. The parent was very, very happy with the way that the officers conducted themselves and, and took care of it. And the, the son's name is Major. He was, he, he had, he had a kick with the police officers and had a good time. And in addition to that, Officer Machota went to, went to his house because he was fascinated with his badge, or not his badge, I'm sorry, his patch, and took him a patch and let him call his name over the, the PA system and let him play with the lights and all that. The, this, it was a great thing that our officers did, and this, this parent was a very, very happy parent because of the, the work that they did. With that, we will recess the council meeting, and I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from March twenty-six, twenty-nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Airport Authority. Confirm take, action taken on city council agenda item B and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Vice Mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Cora, which color, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from March twenty-six, twenty-nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item B and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Cora, which color, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're now reconvene as McAllister City Council. Take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Reed. Second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cora, which color, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys. Anything signed?